Not called its order, the order of the board of superintendent, MS County, please stand. What do we think is followed by the rest of the invitation?
What do we think is to declare in the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all?
Father, thank you for this time. We gather together to tend to the improvements of our hand, with the father died of the students, and many blessings are bestowed on our family, and our county's people, through their service, to practice that spirituality, and keep doing as they're doing. Father, please, we can be best our family, our county, and our nation, with Jesus holy name and prayer. Amen.
Be seated. All right, first is setting the agenda. I would like to add to the closed meeting agenda, an issue of getting advice from the attorney on a legal matter. So is there a motion for that yet? Okay, I guess I'd be a second. I moved to add it to the agenda and you second it. Mr. Carter, would you accept that addition? Ms. Trips? Mr. Wood, or Weskill?
Yes.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right, is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Reverend Jones has moved to accept agenda as amended. Mr. Weskill is seconded. Mr. Carter? Mr. Hips? Mr. Weskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones? I vote aye also. All right, start off, we have the citizens' comment period. This period is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to citizens. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And I see Mr. Philip Jamerson has requested to speak. Mr. Jamerson, always a pleasure to see you, sir.
Most of the time. Anyway, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Philip Jamerson, I live on 2594 Country Club Road. I'm a local business owner, and since I'm semi-retired, I'm a volunteer for many civic organizations, some of which have brought the food festival, railroad festival, Christmas lighting we just had a couple of weeks ago over at Cortland Park. And these, I feel that these events make Appomattox a better place to live, and they collectively draw thousands of people downtown every year when we have these types of event. But I'm not here representing, even though I chair those committees, I'm not here representing these committees. I'm here to point out that these events just don't happen. I've heard that so many times, things just happen. Well, these events don't just happen. These events happen, and I'd be remiss, I see the fire department here, they were instrumental in getting, helping decorate and get these lights hung for Christmas. So I want to thank you very much for that. They took what has been a tough job, made it a lot easier. But anyway, as I said, these things don't just happen. There's about thirty of us that serve on these various committees, and we volunteered literally hundreds of hours after work. That's in the evenings when people are at home, we're out there. We've already started planning food festival and railroad day for next year. And I mentioned, there's a lot of people that help with this, but I want to point out just one, and there may be others in here too, and I hate doing one, but I want to point out our county administrator, Susan Adams. Since she's come to Appomattox, she has selflessly volunteered her time. She was there from the conception of the Cortland Park, through all the different activities, funds that she's been there. But she has been at all those times, she has been there five o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning when it's raining to check in, a hundred and forty vendors that come in there between five and nine, five AM and nine AM. She's there, she helps check IDs, she marks the vendor locations. She comes to all of them, she hangs Christmas lights. And she provides that bookkeeping, she attends all the meetings that we have, and her, and she has this valuable insight. And I will say, and there's other volunteers that know this about me too, that Ms. Adams and I don't always agree. But we always get along because of our respect and trust with each other. And whether I agree or disagree with some of the things that she would bring up at our meetings, I have never once thought or considered that her comments, or her thoughts, or her actions were done on anything but was in the best interest of Appomattox. And I just appreciate her, and I want you to know that I'm thankful for her, and I appreciate that Ms. Adams is here in Appomattox. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Jamerson. Thank you for that. All right, is anybody that didn't sign up that would like to speak? All righty. Next, we have the appearances. These are scheduled times provided by the board to allow citizens and organizations outside of county government to discuss matters of importance of board. First up, we have Mr. Alex Rendon of Dominion Energy, who's requested to appear before the board to discuss the PJM open window.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Alex Rendon with Dominion Energy. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak to you. I do have a short presentation, I have some hard copies of it as well, if I could hand those out, or I think we might be getting the presentation up here. Would anybody like a hard copy? Before I get into the PJM open window, which I will discuss, I wanted to give a brief introduction to some of the current activities that we've got going on at the company. If you don't mind heading to the next slide, thank you. As you probably know, Dominion Energy, we serve over 2.7 million customers in Virginia. We've got over nineteen thousand employees and contractors in Virginia and North Carolina. But the key figure here on this slide that I'd like to draw your attention to is at the bottom right there, twenty thousand four hundred plus megawatts of generation is what we currently have on the Dominion Energy system. Next slide, please. Our current energy portfolio, we're committed to a diverse and all of the above energy strategy, which I'll speak a little bit more about on the next slide. But, you know, this is a brief snapshot of what we prioritize when it comes to energy generation in Virginia. We've got existing nuclear, that's part of our DNA at Dominion Energy. We've been operating nuclear facilities safely and effectively and reliably for over fifty years. We've also, we're totally committed to renewable energy. We have the, I think, the second largest fleet of solar facilities in development and operational in the whole country, and are currently constructing the largest offshore wind project in federal waters off the coast of Virginia Beach. We're also committed to, again, having a fully diversified energy portfolio. That's going to include, in the near future, some natural gas. Chesterfield Energy Reliability Center is a proposed project on the site of the existing Chesterfield Power Station. We're proposing sort of a fast start natural gas plant there, up to a thousand megawatts to run on the hottest and coldest days of the year. And if we could move to the next slide, the reason why this all of the above strategy is so vital to the reliability and affordability of our grid is those two numbers there. And before I get into too many details, I want to warn you, I'm a liberal arts major working for an electric utility, so I don't have all the answers to the engineering questions that you may have. But one thing that I, you know, makes sense to me, that bottom number there, that twenty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-one megawatts, what that represents is our electricity demand in the DOM zone for 2024. That's the highest demand day that we experienced, and that represents all of the generation, transmission, and distribution infrastructure that we've built in our over one-hundred-year history as a company. We project that over the next fifteen years, that electricity demand is going to about double. So if I can put that in perspective again, you know, all of the electric infrastructure from generation all the way to the wires that connect up to your house, we're basically expected to double, to be able to meet double that demand in the next fifteen years. That's a major challenge, but it's also a major opportunity that we are, we're pleased to be able to try and meet. Next slide, please. In our annual IRP filing, and IRP is an integrated resource plan that we file with the State Corporation Commission, we try and demonstrate how we plan to meet that demand over the next fifteen years. It's not, what it is not is a definitive build plan. We're not saying this is how much we're going to build, and when the State Corporation Commission approves or disapproves of our IRP plan, it's not them endorsing or approving any of these plans. But what it is, is it shows, we model from an engineering basis and an economic basis how we plan to meet that demand over the next fifteen years. That chart there, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions or get into any details, but it shows you some of the different ways that we've modeled how we plan to meet that demand. And really, the main thrust here is that it's going to take a lot of everything that we've got. Everything that we have, we need more of in order to continue to meet the growing demand that we're experiencing in Dominion Energy's service territory. And that's from a generation standpoint. So again, you know, that's solar, that's wind, it's energy storage, it's our existing nuclear, as well as small modular reactors going into the future, which I think you're going to hear a little bit about tonight from AEP, as well as new natural gas. Next slide, please. It's also going to mean building some new transmission infrastructure, and that's part of what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. So that map is the map of PJM. And PJM, that stands for Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland. It's the grid, the regional grid operator that Dominion, Virginia, is a part of. And PJM, part of what PJM does is they maintain the stability of the grid. We're interconnected with all of those states there, and it's PJM's job to balance power coming onto the grid with energy demand from off the grid. With all of the power demands that Dominion is experiencing, that frankly, that Virginia is experiencing, PJM has identified some areas in our transmission grid that are going to need improvements. And when we're talking about transmission lines, those are the high voltage, you know, the much larger lines that carry electricity over long distances. You know, there's generation in Ohio and Pennsylvania that when Dominion's own power can't supply the demand, we're able to import power because we're interconnected with all these different utilities and states here. Next slide, please. So as part of PJM's process to analyze the power demand challenges on the transmission grid, they conduct what's called an open window process. And what an open window process is, that's their term for a competitive process where transmission operators can make proposals and essentially bid into meeting the areas of concern that PJM highlights in any service territory. And where it relates to Dominion Service Territory and where it relates to Appomattox is, there were identified in basically this part of Virginia, you know, down the line, ten, fifteen years, that there may be some power demand issues on the transmission grid, or some capacity issues. How much electricity can we move from point A to point B in order to meet the demand? Over long, and this is over long distances. Part of PJM's responsibility is, you know, kind of not Band-Aid solutions. They are long-term planners, we're looking at, you know, a fifteen-year projection, but even further than that. What they want to see in this competitive process is serious infrastructure upgrades and what the open window closed earlier this year. And there has been an active committee called the Transmission Expansion Advisory Committee that's been considering all of the different proposals that were submitted to PJM to address these power capacity concerns. That process is ongoing, and they have narrowed down on basically a handful of proposals. And I'm happy to provide what those proposals are to you in a follow-up. But ultimately, what we've got right now, to make a lot of detail a little bit more simple, there are proposals out there for major transmission upgrades in Dominion Energy's transmission service territory. And because this is just the beginning of what is likely to be a many-years-long process of approval at the PJM level, then on down to state and local approvals for these lines, we want to ensure that you all have the information that this is happening. And the reason why it's so important is that at this time, those maps and those proposals, they're really high level. So right now, as far as I understand, the proposals that are under consideration by the Transmission Expansion Advisory Committee, there's not a line that goes through Appomattox per se. But there are proposals where the routes come close to Appomattox, and because we're so early in what is a multi-year process, there's a possibility that somewhere down the line, as we get from the macro planning to sort of the micro-level planning when we're considering environmental impacts, cultural and historical resources, there's a potential that there may be some large transmission projects coming into into many parts of Dominion's service territory, including potentially into Appomattox. So I know that's pretty technical, and there's a lot of information there, if we don't mind going to the next slide. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is work collaboratively with the localities that we do business in, and we want to be here to answer questions. And like I said, I'm not an engineer, but we have plenty of them who would be more than happy to entertain any questions that you all have. I'm happy to try if there are any tonight. But I, you know, I just wanted to emphasize that these transmission projects, they're a pretty big deal. A couple of the proposals include what we call seven sixty-five transmission lines. Those are larger transmission lines than any lines that currently exist in the Dominion territory. Those proposals actually are a joint venture with AEP, American Electric Power, and First Energy. We're working on the details of what ultimately that's going to look like, what each company is going to have a role in if one of those proposals is selected. But that's a larger line than any that exists in the Dominion Service Territory right now. And it's going to cover, you know, a pretty significant number of miles to bring electricity from where currently it's being generated to where it's needed. So like I said, a lot of detail, I tried to keep that pretty high level. We want to work in collaboration and in partnership with you all as this process moves forward, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you all have now about the transmission lines or any other Dominion issues that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Trips?
Not related to this project, but just curious, when there is an electrical outage in the county, where are the linemen dispatched from?
I think, yeah, this, Appomattox is served by the Farmville Distribution Office.
Yeah, I was curious because on Thanksgiving, we lost power for six hours, which for a lot of people was a very bad situation.
Absolutely.
Twelve-thirty to six-thirty, I think. And a month prior to that, we lost electricity as well. And so, you know, I don't know all the nuance that goes into, you know, repairing those sorts of things. But, you know, and obviously being Thanksgiving Day, you know, who knows whatever's going on with the linemen too, I don't know, but...
But we are a twenty-four-seven through sixty-five business.
Sure, yeah, and you're in the business to provide electricity, so. But, yeah, I was just curious on, well, if I can put you on the spot, Jonathan, if I could, do you know how long it was before Dominion got there? Since you were on the scene for that? Oh, okay. Right. Okay. Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm asking as a representative just because, you know, obviously, we want our people there paying a premium for electricity to have reliable and fast restoration.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, like I say, I understand it's Thanksgiving, and I appreciate those people that do that work. But I was curious as to where they come from. But you say it's generally Farmville? So I mean, response, ideally, it would be within forty-five minutes or so, depending on where.
Right, right. And, you know, if there's some specific issues around maybe like the length of time for restoration of an outage, I'm happy to kind of go and ask some questions about, hey, you know, what resources were deployed, what resources were available on Thanksgiving Day? Because, you know, like you said, it's Thanksgiving Day, but we are twenty-four-seven through sixty-five. It doesn't matter what day, it's important that we are reliably and quickly restoring outages. So happy to kind of follow up on that with you if you'd like.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know the info.
Sure.
Yeah, just generally, and I do have constituents that ask.
Yeah. And what I'd offer to you as well, and what I'd offer to everyone here, you know, I'd be happy to follow up with an email. My contact information's right up there, even on Thanksgiving Day. We've got our phones on, and sometimes it's a little bit easier for folks to get in touch with me, and, you know, I know the right people to call. And, you know, if there's an outage that you're concerned about, and, you know, maybe it's been two, three hours, you haven't seen anybody come by, I'd say, give me a call, I can call over the Farmville office, see what's going on. And a lot of times, that helps cut through some of the red tape that is part of, part and parcel of reporting and responding to an outage. So I'd make that offer to any of the board members.
That's very bold, Alex.
Part of the job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Weskill?
I've always wondered, what percentage of the generated power do you take to move the electric? Because it uses electric all along the way.
That's right, yeah. The efficiency of the transmission lines is something that has to be taken into account in the engineering of those, in design of those projects. I don't exactly know what the answer to that question is, but what I... It's part of the efficiency part of that, is why it's important to continue to be able to meet demand when there's more demand pulling power off of those lines than we're able to provide. That's where you start getting into, you know, transmission lines basically not being reliable. And, you know, I'd be happy to kind of follow up with you on that question. I don't have the answer right now. But that's why we need to continue to meet that demand. We've got to get more generation on the system. We've got to get higher capacity transmission lines in our system so that we don't run into a situation where we can't meet that demand.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Carter?
Energy storage? You got it up till 2035, is that correct?
Yeah, we've got targets all the way up to 2035. That we have to be annually. Sorry?
Anything beyond that?
Yeah, I think our, so if, as we flip back to the slide where we kind of list out, I think we, I think our build plan does call for additional energy storage past 2035. I'm not exactly sure how much past 2035. I think our annual targets right now, through the SEC, through our regulator, does take us through 2035. But as that technology evolves, you know, it's, especially as we talk about intermittent resources like solar and wind that are only coming onto the system when the sun's shining and the wind's blowing, it's important to capture that energy, and as that technology improves, if we, you know, get some kind of breakthrough in storage technology, I think that we'll see more of it.
Yeah, one thing that's scary is the last time I was up on this, it was nearly full, the storage area. So I don't know what has progressed to eliminate some of this waste.
I'm not sure I know, so the waste on the storage site?
Yes. The drums, the fuel assemblies, et cetera. You are talking about nuclear now. Yes. So they have to be buried naturally. So you don't have any idea on that.
On nuclear?
Yeah, only nuclear, only.
Yeah, as we're currently operating nuclear, we have for fifty years, I think that small modular reactors have a little bit of a different profile. And if y'all are interested in learning more about small modular reactors, again, I think you're going to hear some tonight, but we'd be happy to come and talk about our, what we're doing as well.
Okay, that is, I got one more question.
Sure.
And this is kind of premature, but anyway, on page three, where it listed different utilities?
Yes, sir.
Now, they all, BWR or PWR, or a combination of both?
I don't know if I know the acronym that you're using.
Okay, is it boiling water reactors or pressurized water reactors?
On the, on the map of all the...
Yes, yes.
I'm not, I'm not real sure, the answer to that. I'd be happy to follow up with you.
That's okay, I was just, I was just wondering, because I still have Framatone blood in me. And with that, this is a good, it's a good selling point, really.
Sure.
If it's PWR.
Okay.
I noticed that some of them are, such as Duquesne Light Company in Pennsylvania and all, I know they're BWRs. But in our area here, North Annam, Sari, it's a combination. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter? Well, I say I have one question. I'm glad to hear that they're updating the transmission lines, but based on the ODEC briefing we had a couple of months ago, we need power generation more, you're not going to have any power to generate, to transmit, according to the ODEC briefing we have. In fact, you know, 2028 slash 29, we're going to be at capacity of our current generating. And so I'm more concerned about what you're doing about generating power because according to the ODEC, even if you started for approval right now, you wouldn't be online till like 2040, 2045. And according to the ODEC forecast here, we're going to be out of power. We're not going to be able to meet the needs by then. So I'm more concerned about what Dominion's doing about pro-generating power. And especially when I'm looking at that ODEC's efficiency rating chart from the ELCC class ratings, we look at coal, eighty-four percent, you know, productivity, gas turbines, sixty-eight, gas combined cycles, seventy-eight, gas combustion, dual turbines, seventy-nine, diesel utility, you know, ninety-one percent proficiency, steam, seventy-four. And then I look at the fact that all that you're pushing on us as solar, you're looking at thirty-four percent off-road wind, sixty-one percent offshore, solar, eight percent, tracking solar, thirteen percent. That's not meeting our needs. I mean, your own numbers show that. So I don't know why Dominion and you people keep pushing all this stuff.
Sure, I mean, I'll answer your question a couple of ways. So when it comes to coal, natural gas, you know, we still operate coal units in Virginia, and our current IRP, yeah, Clover Power Station over in Halifax, right? It's, we're, our IRP is up to just a few years ago, we're calling for that to be retired basically by like 2024, 2025 timeframe. Right now, you know, we're planning for a much longer operational life of that power station because we need it. To your point, we need every ounce of generation that we can get, and we're building that, and we're committed to building that. We're going to need, we're going to need more gas.
Well, looking at the chart of what generating systems, according to ODEC, are in the cycle for approval and building, yeah. That doesn't testify to what you just said.
Sure, well, I think we're confident that, you know, our CERC power station, Chesterfield Energy Reliability Center, we're in the middle of permitting that right now. I'm confident we'll get that permitted before 2040. I hope so, at least. We are going to have our DEQ air permit process, that's going to take place in early 2025. I think we're going to file for our CPCN for that project as well in early 2025. I would anticipate that ideally, we have that project permitted by the end of the year. So I'm not sure where ODEC's getting their numbers, but certainly, you know, it's one power plant.
Or the, yeah, the...
PJM.
Yep, PJM.
Yeah, well, sir, you're identifying a real issue that we're facing, and, you know, we look at it as an opportunity. We're going to have to work in partnership with a lot of different folks, localities like yourselves, to meet that demand. And ultimately, you know, we do see a diversified energy portfolio as really key to that, you know. Sure, solar has a lower capacity factor than natural gas or other more traditional generating fuels do, but it's an important piece of the puzzle. And, you know, when you look at, when solar is generating the most is the middle of the day, right? And usually, that occurs in between peak, peak, or peak demand hours, right? Our peak demand hours are usually in the mornings when people are waking up at home, and in the evenings, especially on hot and cold days, right, when they're coming home. And that's right when solar's coming off. But in the middle of the day, when solar's generating a lot, that generation or profile, it really appeals to like data centers. It appeals to data centers because they need constant generation throughout the day. And I'll point out too, that solar has zero fuel cost. And if we've got solar...
It uses a lot of oil, that's fuel.
I can assure you that the fuel costs on a solar facility...
I mean, wind uses a lot of oil with solar.
Yeah, are much lower than what a traditional generating facility would have. It allows us flexibility, and certainly, there are going to be days during the... Uh, it, it allows us flexibility. And certainly, there are going to be days during the day where the sun's not shining, that we have to rely on other sources of, of energy as well. But, uh, we've got to have that diversified generation profile to continue to meet that demand reliably.
All right. Well, thank, thanks for answering our questions and-
Yes, sir.
-speaking your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, for the opportunity to speak with you.
All right, up we have Mr. Rob Mann, Government Affairs Director for AEP, who's going to talk to us about the small modular reactors. So here you go, Mr. Carter.
Yes. Home at Last.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And a, actually, that, that was from my predecessor, Larry Jackson. He spoke to y'all last week. My, my title, I'm External Affairs in, in Community Coordination. So, um, no, I, I did want to give y'all an update on where we are with their, um, SMR project that we announced. Uh, announced it in November, had our open house, uh, public format in December, uh, December 5th. It was well-attended, uh, a lot of good questions, um, kind of as expected. There were some posi, positive comments. There were some concerns too, you know. So I, I, we had a good group of people there to address, um, folks' questions. And, you know, we're still moving forward, uh, putting together our early site permit application. And that, that's kind of the reason I'm here today, to talk to you about that early site permit application. Um, you learned a lot about energy tonight, um, from Alex here. And, um, just kind of segueing off that, the SMR, as you're aware, it, it is a small modular reactor. We, it is a nuclear generation facility. Um, this would provide, uh, clean, safe, reliable energy. Um, it, it, this would be, um, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, it's, it's producing energy. Um, the footprint is a smaller, so the, it's, gives the ability to construct these in a little quicker fashion than the traditional nuclear plants. Um, AP itself does have a couple of nuclear plants in its portfolio, been under operation safely for over 40 years. Um, one thing I will say about the storage, what I did learn, uh, the plan is to have the wasted fuel or spent fuel, it'd be stored on-site, um, at our plant. There's enough facility, uh, enough area for that to be stored on-site. We had some slides. I can share them with you also from our Cook Nuclear Plant. It's in Michigan. Um, and so 40-some years of material is right there, um, stored on-site. So it doesn't, there, there's no plan for that to leave, uh, the site, is, or purpose of that, just to kind of, you know, talk to that point of it. Um, the, the early site permit application, it is quite a process. You know, we're looking at about three and a half, four years, uh, to, to get the permit application filed. Um, and there are government grant monies available. The Department of Energy, uh, does have a good amount of, um, funding that would be available, and that's what we're seeking. This would help offset some of the costs of this early site permit. And kind of segue into why I'm here tonight, um, we're, we're asking, Appalachian is asking the board support, um, for this early site permit application. And this would be a letter, uh, that's written to, um, the Nuclear Energy Board, and that would help, um, give us a better chance to get some of this funds. This would help offset the early site permitting costs that does go back into the rate base. Um, you know, the, the property itself, it's in the Rec Island District in the northwest corner. Um, currently, a, as we spoke last time, the major, the property itself where the nuclear plant would be built is actually in Campbell County. However, the AP-owned Joshua Falls site does have about 60 acres that falls within Appomattox County. Um, so the actual site plan is in Campbell. Um, this would be beneficial to Virginia as far as generate it. We've had outside companies provide us some information. It could generate up to $4,000 in job, um, up to 4,000 jobs in Virginia, and economic benefits up in the billions. Um, the actual construction to the area, it would bring probably a thousand workers to the area. This would be over a five to six-year period. Um, and then ongoing, the plan itself would be operated by about 120 employees. So these are high-paying jobs to the area. So, you know, the economic benefits would still flow from those jobs introduced into the area during that timeframe. Um, our timeframe for this, a, and I know that was kind of discussed a little bit, it is pretty far. You know, from start to finish, we're looking about 2036, um, i, if everything goes through, um, according to what our, our schedule is, and, you know, our understanding of the permit applications. So I do have some, I, I didn't have one prepared tonight, but I will email Susan, uh, the template of the letter, and, you know, i, any other questions that come. I was kind of thinking we probably have some questions, and we can answer that, you know, over the next few days. Um, the permit application itself, it's due mid-January. So we, we do want to move this pretty quickly in the next couple of weeks, um, to, to get a letter of support.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
So it still takes approximately 10 years for NRC approval?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? So as I understand it, you would need this letter of support, like, before our January meeting?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
All right. And you're sending the draft or the, uh, sample letter tomorrow, I guess?
Yes, sir. Will do. Yeah.
All righty.
Is, are there any things that, you know, we can help educate, in, any questions that we can provide? Um, just, or we can work through the product, you know, as things come up, we can work through that too.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
I'm probably going to regret this.
Oh, no.
I haven't received one call or email from any of my constituents on this. I say I'm going to regret it, because probably, you know. But I know that just, you know, seeing the internet traffic on it from the Campbell, Campbell County side, I know there's a lot of fear, just with the word "nuclear" in general.
Yes.
So what could you, what could you say or explain that would help alleviate? And I understand that some people may never be satisfied, um, you know, with whatever your answer may be. But what would be your, um, you know, initial kind of education points to alleviate some of those concerns? And then the second part would be, uh, with the indefinite storage of the waste on the site, what sort of security, um, is in place for those types of facilities?
Mr. Chairman.
Carter.
Think I could help you a whole lot on that question. We've got two fabricators right there on Mount Athas Road, and I know you're aware of.
Yes.
And, uh, the, oh, I always call it the, uh, high-rich utility, uh, not utility, the fabricator, uh, their work history, and also down right below there, uh, Framatones work history. Over the years, I think it has accumulated nothing but safety activities. And that's one thing that is on your side.
Yeah. And, and the safety, that is first and foremost. Um, you know, we're not, before we want to generate any power, we want to provide a safe environment for the people that live there, as well as our employees. So safety is first and foremost, and that was our consistent message. We did have, uh, folks from, um, the NERC there that did speak towards safety at the meeting, and I can get some bullet points of safety, um, that aspect that we can share with the residences and yourself. Um, so that, that is key. Um, proven, you know, our Cook Nuclear Plant, that came up too. We had representatives from the Cook Plant in Michigan, uh, for AEP that were there on-site. And so we, we do have a track record of safety. And so we, we can absolutely provide some information. Granted, s, some won't completely be satisfied, but we, we, we can get that information out there. And then the security issues, that was, um, a large portion. Um, I can get you the facts on that, of how it will be secured. It, it will be, uh, definitely a secured facility. Um, currently, as we mentioned, 765 lines, this property does have the 765, uh, KV lines that actually run into the station currently. They've been there since 1976, '77. Um, just recently, for the 765 station itself, we had a large, um, security fence, extra cameras. So this site will be an extremely secure facility. Um, I don't know the specific details. I envision it will be fenced all around the boundary. Um, you know, there will be guarded type situations there. So, yeah, it, safety is first and foremost for us. But I can get more detail to you on those two aspects there.
Any other questions from the board? Would the board like to take action on a letter of support at this time?
I want to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Carter's made a motion to send a letter of support. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wolf scale.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
No.
I, no, for Mr. Hips. I vote aye also. So the motion to send a letter of support is approved.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, next up is Mr. Jonathan Garrett, Fire Chief, who'd like to talk to us about a ladder truck.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to be here to, uh, speak to you all tonight. Um, I wanted to, uh, say thank you as well for y'all's commitment to supporting our Fire Department and, um, supporting the safety of our community. Um, I come before you tonight to talk to you about our current ladder truck, which is a 2003 aerial ladder truck. Uh, it's been very reliable to us over the years, um, but it's at the end of its useful life. As we plan for the future, replacing it is essential to ensuring that we meet the needs of our growing community, and that we maintain the safety of our citizens and firefighters alike. Um, our Truck Committee has done some research, and been looking for a little bit of time now, um, and located a 2014 Pierce Arrow 75-foot aerial. Um, with this, we know that, we've kind of forecasted for a couple of years now that we're looking at over a million-dollar expense for a fire apparatus of this nature. Um, we decided that in trying to be better stewards of, uh, our money, and the county's money, and the town's money, we decided that we would look at some used options. Um, the Truck Committee located this and physically sent some folks down and put eyes on this, uh, vehicle. Um, and feels like that it kind of fits the bill of what our needs are. Um, the options for this truck, um, gives us extended useful life of our fire apparatus. We know that it's not brand new. However, it can be brought up to today's standards. It's already, uh, currently, the way that it sits has enhanced safety features, um, has a higher capacity as far as the ladder tip load. Um, it would be a reduction in the axle, which, um, improves maneuverability and improves operational efficiency. Um, so it addresses our current needs and should meet future needs of our community as well. If you look through the slides there, you can see some pictures of it. That's in the condition that it sits right now. Um, our Truck Committee went down, or a couple of our Truck Committee went down and came back and made a presentation to the rest of the Truck Committee and the Fire Department. And we noted about 34 or 35, uh, deficiencies that we would like addressed. Um, the company that we're looking at, this is a used fire truck retailer, and they, uh, they felt confident that they could, uh, address all of those deficiencies, um, that we identified without increasing the price point. We actually were able to reduce the price point a little bit. Um, and we believe that it is, uh, fair market value. Um, while we were down there, we got the opportunity to take a look at some of the refurbishments that they were having going on. Um, they are, they refurbished all the US Navy's, uh, fire apparatus, which is pretty neat. Um, but this truck will be painted to, uh, match our department trucks currently, and redone with all of the safety reflective and the, uh, vinyl decals that match our current trucks, um, as well as address, um, some significant components of the truck to ensure that they last for the, uh, life that we expect it to. This refurbishment and sale of the truck includes a one-year warranty, um, for any kind of mechanical repair. The refurbishment in and of itself, um, most of the discrepancies that we had were mainly cosmetic, um, but it does have things that I mentioned before, such as airbags, uh, which allow safer conditions for our firefighters. This truck will offer enhanced protection for homes, businesses, our schools, uh, all of our critical infrastructure in the town and county of Appomattox. Um, so it will be a cornerstone for our ability to meet the growing demands of our community. Um, the company that we're looking at, they have, uh, a dedicated group of technicians down there on-site that are very plentiful. So if this were to go forward, um, they said that we could possibly have the truck in a timeframe of 120 to 150 days. Why that's important is when we talk to, uh, fire truck vendors, when you're looking at a brand-new fire truck, we're looking at a cost of over $2 million, and you're looking at probably three to four years out before you even would, uh, take delivery of the apparatus. So we're trying to look at a $1.4 million cost savings. Um, later on in your slides, you see some of their testimonial work that they've done in, uh, years past, um, of some refurbishments that they've completed. It's a really in-depth process. And they do a really good job to ensure that they meet the needs of the communities that are going to be receiving these fire trucks. So lastly, um, my pitch to you all tonight, um, is to respectfully ask you to consider, um, an interest-free loan to our Fire Department, to the amount of $450,000. Um, my intent of this, or our intent of this, is to pay that back using, um, Fire Programs funds and our mailer donation that we receive in an annual payment. Um, I've submitted to the county a MOU that would explain, uh, the details of that loan, um, as well as I would plan to meet with the Town of Appomattox, actually tomorrow night, requesting a donation for their support towards this piece of apparatus. Um, we try to be, uh, responsible with the funds that we get, and we try to be good stewards of it and very thoughtful about how we spend our money. We truly believe that this truck will be a great addition to our community, um, also while trying to save taxpayer money. Um, the crunch time of this is that we started investigating this about a week and a half ago. Um, so we, we have to sign paperwork, um, by the 20th of this month to hold this truck. While we were down there, several trucks that we were looking at went off the market while we were there. So the used fire truck market is, is a really fast-paced market, and I feel like it's only going to get worse. The prices are probably going to go up, and availability's probably going to go down due to the price of new fire apparatus and the length of time it takes to actually get that fire apparatus. Anybody have any questions about that?
Mr. Hips.
Jonathan, what did you say the total cost of the?
So the total cost would be about $650,000.
You're ass, you're asking the county to loan you?
$450,000.
And you're asking the town to loan you the 200?
Yes. And it'll be a little bit more from the town's part, because we have to cover costs to, uh, add equipment to the truck and, um, the mounting of that equipment. So there's some, the equipment that has to be mounted, we just wanted to cover that cost, but that's going to be submitted to the town.
So in excess of 200?
A little bit, yes, sir. Probably 250.
Mr. Chairman, you-
Mr. Carter.
You said, Jonathan, that's the one that you currently have, 2003 model?
Yes, sir.
And it's not up to speed to all the regulations?
Yeah, so NFPA, um, suggests that it should be taken out of service in 20 years. The big thing with that is when we're evaluating with our, um, ISO rating, which impacts homeowner's insurance, this is one of the critical pieces that is weighted in that. And we field phone calls all the time from insurance companies or prospective home buyers, um, about what our ISO rating is and what our capabilities are when we respond to these calls. And so, um, you know, that impacts whether or not people relocate or build homes in our community. And what that also impacts is the Fire Programs funds that we get, or the aid to localities from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs. Part of that money that people pay when you pay your homeowner's insurance comes back to the locality in the form of pass-through money that is then given and dispersed to the Fire Departments in the locality, um, which is in turn what we plan to use for the payment of this truck back to, or the repayment- of this truck back to, or the repayment back to you all.
Well, Jonathan, I'll be honest with you. There's two functions in this county that I fully support, my Fire Department and the Rescue. And without either one, this community, this county is dead, dead in the woods. For economic development, anything else, education, all of that plays right into the same hand. So I'm in favor of it, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make a motion that we approve the amount that the Chief has asked for from the county.
Okay, Mr. Carter's made the motion to fund the fire truck at no interest to the Fire Department for 450K. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones has seconded. Discussion.
Ms. Adams. What the logistics of all of this financially?
We would just have to formulate an internal loan that we could work out a repayment agreement with them, with the Fire Department. It would be new money, but I think that we, it would be affordable for us to be able to do that.
Mr. Whistle.
So the repayment would come from the pass-through of the fire insurance money that you're currently getting?
Yes, sir.
Your mic's not on.
Is that an annual or a?
It's an annual payment that's distributed to both Fire Departments. And I do know the Town of Pamplin, they utilize their payments, Fire Program payments, toward their fire truck. So we could do the same thing with the Alphamatics Fire Department.
And then you mentioned something else in the payment plan. You mentioned the insurance and something else.
Fundraising, their mailer fundraiser. So we send out a mailer each year in April, and that typically generates around $20,000 in revenue from that. So the Fire Programs Fund is like 50, it's almost, no, I'm sorry, it's 30,000 that comes to us now, I think. And then coupled with the 20,000 and then other fundraisers. And then we also hope for the sale of the truck that would be coming back to you all directly as well. So this is guaranteed money, and it's, it's been increasing over the years. I think when I started out, it was like 52,000, but I think at one time it was 20-some thousand that it came down to. We do split that with the town, with, I'm sorry, with Pamplin and us, but we also get town Fire Programs too. This is about $20,000. Both of that, we use to pay notes back on our brush trucks, which are satisfied. So this, these funds are paid in, are available and would be earmarked.
So, so it wouldn't be a new repayment burden, it's something you're already doing.
Yes, sir.
It's not like you're going to be robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
Are you done?
I'm done. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. How often is this 20-year-old jock breaking down? Just curious.
Broken down. So right now, it's, it's not out of service, but it's got a reduced response time due to an air leak. It has to sit for about five minutes before it can, that may be a little on the high end of things, but it has to sit for a while before it can get en route because it has to take time for the air to build up. I don't know that it's physically broken down where it couldn't be driven somewhere, but it does have some other deficits that need to be addressed.
How, for structured fires, how often are you using that?
We try to take it out on every structure fire. Sometimes the driveway doesn't really, is not conducive to that, but some of our training, we have, it's got a huge complement of ground ladders that can be used on any structure fire. So a lot of people say, well, this ladder truck didn't get set up and used on a fire, but it's got ground ladders that can be used to go and rescue victims. One of the other cool things that we're looking at with this truck is adding the extrication tools to it and using it on 460 for the vehicle accidents, which is also a high number of calls. So we're looking at maximizing the usefulness of this apparatus as well, beyond what our current fleet does.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Whistle.
How much do you think you'll bring in with the old truck?
So we've talked to some folks, and we hope it's around 200,000. We, we're not guaranteed, but that, that's, that is our hope. But the used market value of, of trucks like this, because it's a commercial cab, there's not a lot of other trucks that are similar to this one out there. So there's no real set price point, so we just kind of, kind of list it. And we're planning to use a broker that we found this truck on that gets, that kind of expands the, to a broader area of interest across the country.
Mr. Chairman, I call up with a question.
All right, Mr. Carter's called for the question. Mr. Whistle. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you.
Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Now get out and bust your butt.
All right, next up is Sheriff Richardson.
Chairman, Board, thank y'all for having me. First, thank y'all for supporting the Fire Department. I'm sure they greatly deserve it, and they, they do a great job for us and also for the county, so I appreciate that. I'm just here after Mr. Carter asked at the beginning of the year to come through quarterly to give some stats, so I was just here to fulfill my obligations with that. First, I just give the quarterly stats. We served 328 summons the past quarter, 101 misdemeanor warrants and 32 felony warrants. So year-to-date, in the county, it's 2,161 summons, 349 misdemeanor warrants served, and 185 felony warrants served. Any questions?
That was quick.
Did you say how many traffic stops in there?
I'm sure it's more than 2,161, but that's how many summons were generated from those traffic stops.
Okay, that's one of the connections. And then the other question I have, since we've talked about it and Wetset News brought it up, would you state what the true position is on Blue Ridge Jail and ineligible immigrants? So if we?
I can speak from the, the Sheriff of Alphamatics standpoint, that we are not a sanctuary county, and that if there is ICE detainer that comes across our desk, we will serve that ICE detainer. This is not a sanctuary county.
I appreciate that, Sheriff. Thank you. Any other questions for the Sheriff? All right.
Thank y'all for y'all's support this year, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Jeff Shepherd, Maintenance Supervisor, who would like to talk to us about the Community Center.
Appreciate all you firefighters. Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. As you all know, we've been working with DSS rebuilding their office up here in Court Street. And we come down to a point where, as we started doing a new layout for the offices and bathrooms here and there, brought the ladies up, I taped up two or three different layouts on the ground up there for them to look at it and see if everybody was happy with this and that. They kind of liked some of the ideas. We went to Harris Office Furniture, I believe it is, had the ladies come down, they did a 3D sketch of the layout with cubicles, and I think it was five main offices that we had, and then the bathroom layouts and stuff like that. Talked around, kicked it around, and some of the ladies were saying that they needed complete offices, that they couldn't use cubicles before, for privacy for their clients and their clientele up there. So we got to thinking, and I only had one place to go that I could gain some extra room, and that was down at the Community Center. If I put what we have now on Court Street, there is no room for expansion at all. I mean, we're tight as far as the amount of filing cabinets that's needed, the room that's needed. We couldn't grab another office the way that consists right now. So we went down to the Community Center and started pulling some tapes and running some lasers and drew some lines and got the ladies back out there and said, would this work? Right now, we're using the front offices at the Community Center, and it's working for them. So I started drawing, and I'm, my drawings are not going to be in color, but you can kind of get the idea of what I'm doing. What I'm looking to do is, to start with, I'm going to take about a third of the floor space from the back of the building and head in towards the kitchen. Basically, this is the first curtain. Thank you. I believe I'm with two-thirds of the floor space down there. As you can see, if you came up, come in on the kitchen entrance. The whole area there along the bottom of the page is still open for rentals that everybody would use. The dark checkered-in area right there is actually a hallway. You'll see where the hallway starts on the left. It's four foot wide. It comes in front of the existing hallway that's covered with brick as you go down the other main entrance off the parking lot. Comes up, we get four offices in there. I go all the way to the back wall, and you can kind of follow the hallway around. I'm actually getting five on the side, and I'm getting the other nine in the very back, against the very back wall. I have nothing, but it's all for filing cabinets. And these ladies got a whole lot of filing cabinets and a whole lot of files that, right now, would be tough to get most of them back into Court Street. If I can get this in here, as we need the room to expand, I'd always come back up towards the front again. Right now, the way we sit, I'm looking at 1,666 square feet that's still left inside the Community Center. And give them the offices that they need. They keep moving right now. They like the idea of being down there. It does kind of give them a more of an open area. They do have a little bit of a playground up there. Where the original offices right now, what we call Shirley's Office, there is a little hall, there's a little opening right there. Oh, there she is. That comes across and gets into the kitchen area. So the senior senior stays the same, the rental center comes, the rental department comes down, it loses not quite a third on the back end, just to gain them more room and more flexibility. Right now, like I said, at Court Street, I can get them in there, but two years from now, what are we going to do? When we need more room? That's the biggest thing. Here, here we always have more room and more area to move to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, so how is it going to impact the senior citizens?
None.
I know we've had, having some issues with the bathroom, with the usage?
Well, there's, there's a bathroom there, and then the original bathrooms are right to the right. We're not messing with them at all.
But what, what I understand is, has been some issues with, you know, the social services coming in and using the senior bathrooms.
We can probably address that some.
Reverend Jones.
Yes.
To, to your point, we were, we had a meeting with DSS staff the other day, and you know where they have the twin bathrooms? They would like to designate one of the, the twin bathrooms. We're going to make them unisex bathrooms. Designate one of those as a seniors bathroom in order so they can use the restroom that's across the large room. So that, that, those staff members on that end could utilize that restroom and the ones on this side, and that would leave the designated restroom for the seniors.
So they would have a dedicated?
Yes, they would.
Where social services is coming across and going to the two over here, but they have two over in the main hallway that Jeff just told you about. So that's not sufficient for them, but they're going to come across and take the other two, which is a male and female bathroom that we currently use. So you're going to give us what bathroom back, the one in the main hallway? Is that what you're going to do?
I think currently we're in the planning process of the restrooms. In conversation the other day, when Jeff was reviewing the plan with the staff, that's what they decided would probably work better because of the staff members that have moved into the larger room. And they would designate the one in the main hallway where you're speaking of, as a dedicated restroom for the seniors.
So there's still two bathrooms over there. So you both telling, you're going to designate one bathroom to be a unisex bathroom for my male and my female?
Not the ones on the right. The ones on the left is what we were in conversation.
Well, I was going to say, the ones on the left is down the hallway where social services come up the hallway.
And I think that would be a discussion in the Facilities Committee once we start. This is just a presentation of the proposed plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could certainly talk.
And we need to know, you know, to make sure. And I, my next question is, Jeff, I'm listening to you tell everybody that they're going to go down there, what we call the ARCO, to put offices down the ARCO and across the back. So what's going to happen, my, my space in the back? Am I going to still stay there, or are you moving me again? Thirty-seven years now, I've been at the Community Center thirty-seven years. It's the first time in thirty-seven years that I had to move from where I was because social services needed my office. So you built me a new office in the back, but now you're telling me that you're going to use those offices in the back too? So where you going to put me at now?
Can you, I mean, I'm trying to get to where I can use this layout Charlie, and I, and we can, we can, we can, we can accommodate you with an office.
Yeah, on the street?
No. It's just what I'm trying to get, what I'm trying to get.
You know, let me make one more comment, the simplest, okay? All right. Social services is there, okay? Social services don't clean up behind social services, okay? A lot of times, Cheryl got to come in and clean up his dits. Only one person that cleans two days a week in the building. She comes in Monday, she comes in Friday. Monday's because the rentals come in on the weekend. Friday's because they're going to get ready for the winter, rentals are coming in for the weekend. Her brother does what she can do. So she's doing it because while we're there too, okay? So that means that they got to clean up behind themselves, you know? That way you don't have to come down there in the trashcan.
Right.
But the thing is, Reverend, the thing is that we're doing the best we can do, and these seniors have been here a long, long time. They don't know anywhere else to go but to the Community Center. And as I understand, the Community Center was supposed to be a public facility for recreation department and for people in the county to have recreation there. Wasn't meant for another organization like DSS to come in. DSS right now, I have people calling me and asking me, why is DSS down there at the Community Center where you are? Okay, that's a question that I can't answer them, but they're off the beaten path right now, and there are people complaining because they can't get to them. So you're going to put them there at full time? So how people that normally get to them now that's right in town, you know, because they can get too easily in town, but coming downtown to where we are, it's hard for a lot of people, especially older people that are set in their ways and used to going to one spot. I'm not speaking as an employee of Central Virginia Ellos Community Limited. I'm speaking as a si, a public citizen for Alphamatics County. We have, when you all are looking at this, you need to look at that also. If they're not where the public can access them, it's not a good thing. And that's why a lot of things go pop. Their cars are there all the time. You got eight or nine cars that are not being accessed at all. Man. They're there, but no one's going out to do anything. Come on.
Well, Shirley, we, we appreciate your comments, and I'd like to ask you to come to the next Facilities Meeting where we can discuss in detail these things.
Will you please let me know when, and I certainly will be there.
Will do. Speaking as, you know, in front of the Facilities Committee, we have worked at this, and the problem is, the county doesn't have that much office space. The area where the Health Department is has just basically been condemned. The Register doesn't have enough space where they're at. So, and with the court, where with the building that social services went in, was in, there's not enough space there. So we were looking at that, you know, our only feasible option that we look at right now would be to use the community expenditure as social services and still have room for the senior citizens. and still have room for the senior citizens in there and for those activities. And, uh, social services has projected that they're gonna almost double in employees. And we have nowhere else in the county where we can support, you know, the doubling the size of social services other than, uh, the community center. And, and that's why we're, the facilities committee was looking at that and, you know, asked Jeff to do a layout and to. But we still wanna make sure we meet the needs of the, the elderly, I mean, the seniors we wanna take care of. But we also have to say, hey, what are we gonna do with DSS? And I don't know, have we got any complaints about people having to, from DSS constituents having to drive out to the community center versus staying in town? Yeah, so I wish those people would campaign to, rather than to you, tell other people, you know?
I've been there so long, they, I'm a fixture, so they, most of the time they go complain to me, they're not gonna call Susan, 'cause, you know, Susan's secretary gonna say, Susan can't talk to you right now. So it's gonna be hard for them to talk to her.
Some of the children, what I, what I gather is, will, there won't really be a community center. Because all that space would be gone.
No, not all the space.
Well, mo- most of the space would be gone.
It still ends up being sixteen hundred sixty-six square feet.
Mr. Chairman.
One, one back forty six.
But as they expand, they'll just keep encroaching. You know, my heart and soul is with the DSS. But right now today, I can't embrace this. Do we have a community center for the community? This is important, this is important.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm not against it, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I'm just saying that, just wanna make sure I understand because, of course, I've used the community center quite a bit over the years. And so, the space would be great for the seniors.
But, but basically, this, this area here is basically where now they store the tables and chairs. And basically, most of this area is here, so they, they would still, right now, have this area for the community center.
Mr. Chairman, the area where they store the tables and chairs.
Well, I'm in the middle of that area.
Is this the building that we discussed?
No, I said that would be, I was just explaining to Mr. Jones, this area here that we're using is currently used to table and chair storage. So instead of table and chair storage, it's gonna be made into offices. And then where's the table and chair storage?
Most likely, most likely, we're gonna store them upstairs.
And who's gonna be there? I might, I might be more helpful on this, right? Can you embrace this?
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know if we're talking about it or not. Where, in the, in the drawing there, would we have a mandated, uh? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if that, would that be here somewhere? Okay. 'Cause then about fifty B here, so. Okay.
It's, it's, you know, if, if you're looking at the back wall, it's the first curtain area. From the first curtain back to the, to the storage area, where we're going for the wall. And then up across the, the four ALCOs that's going along that back wall to accomplish, to where we get back up front again. Is what we're trying to get in, just to consume and spread them out. And I'm just, I'm just in a holding pattern right now. Here, where we can kind of bump out, if we have to bump out into the courtyard at one time, I mean, there's, there's ways to go down there, there's no ways to go on Court Street. You can't go back, you can't go front.
You know, Mr. Wilson, the basic problem here is, the constraints of Court Street building, all homes, social services, especially with the expansion that they're gonna need to go through. Community Center is the only other building we have. It's not something that we can wait two years to build a new building or, uh, buy a new building somewhere. So it's, it's not something we can, you know, we're sitting in Court Street completely vacant and stripped, waiting for whatever offices we wanna put in there. Which we're thinking about moving the health department there because the health department has to get out of that building. The health department, the state told us we have to move the health department, that building's not, uh, have it, you know, not ADA, it's not, a whole bunch of things wrong with it. So the health department, we've been told we have to move it. Court Street is the only place you have to not move.
Nothing's ADA.
Can I make one more suggestion, Mr. Chairman? I just wanna make one little suggestion, why don't you all, the board members, come down to the community center, walk through with Jeff and let him show you exactly what he's gonna do. Then you can see for yourself. You don't have to look at the drawing, you can look at the building.
Yes, I have been down there with the facilities committee with Jeff when we talked about this several months ago, so I. But probably the other board members should do it, but it's.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
In the current DSS space, how many people is it per office?
Uh, two, three?
Are you talking about Court Street or their temporary space?
At Court Street. Putting them back in there.
I don't think you're picking up much space if you do the math on here compared.
Well, these are, the difference is, these are individual offices versus three to four people in an office. Having, having done this work, it is, uh, hard for me to imagine doing three to four people in an office. It is certainly, so, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing here, right, you know, regardless of, you know, we can have this conversation about the impact to the building. Or, or community center or what, whatever it is, but I don't see how DSS could effectively do any work with three to four people in an office. Having done the work myself. It's just, that doesn't even make sense with, with what they're doing.
They kinda like the cubicle idea, but they, they don't like it and then, we, I mean, I sat down and talked to them a couple of different times and, and I was telling them, you know, we're gonna do a, it's like a three and a half wall type of thing where. Put ceilings insulated down very walls and they can have their own privacy in each.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm saying just from a professional standpoint, having done that for almost twenty years, that there is, uh, no way that I would wanna work in the field in a multi-person office. So I appreciate what you're doing here with.
And I just need to know which way to move forward, I mean, I, I mean, I'm ready to roll with materials and.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm not opposed. DSS issue for its office, that's been going on for years and Kane just got kicked in the road, so we definitely need to do something. I was just making the point that, you know, this building was built to be a community center and whether it's still remaining a community center. You know, will we replace it or put in a new asset as part of the issue?
Well, from a facilities standpoint, we see the one end of it still a community center, the kitchen and, and all the lean area, leave it there and for community use. So we don't see it not, you know, joint DSS community center, I usually say.
To me, it seems like DSS really needs a dedicated building. I mean, we have to do what we have to do, I mean, how will they access to the building?
Like with DSS, DSS comes in, there's a whole wing here that's not on the drawing.
Yes.
The DSS is still using, that would be their access.
And so they would have to even come into this area?
No, no, this, this is a door here, this is a hallway, this is a hall, this one. So, yeah.
Yeah, they entered the building by the flagpole, come down and they're gonna follow us all the way over there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
Um, one thing we discovered in the layout on the Court Street location, you know, we were talking about the cubicles. When we, when we laid it out, cubicles fit. On the services side, we can't have cubicles, we've gotta have dedicated confidential space for caseworkers. Cubicles were okay for the benefits side and we were able to make that fit into the footprint, but the services side, they can't operate with people. Because of their confidentiality, just like you spoke to. Plus, years ago, I believe, you may have been there also, Reverend Jones, an office, the, the building is underutilized now because no one occupied those offices until social services moved there. So if, if we don't utilize this plan, we probably need to think about somebody that we could put at least on that wing that has offices. So we could utilize that building.
And again, I'm not against it.
'Cause at one time, the facilities committee looked at moving the registrar over into that unused, the social services building now. And also part of that, so it's, it's, it's like, did we use the building? Or did we let it, I mean, they're paying heat and electricity, that told us time, the community center was, basically not used that much.
So we made the decision tonight? Is that the plan?
Sooner, sooner as I know which way to go, I'm gonna go work tomorrow morning.
Materials waiting, we got people waiting to, we got an empty, over in the Court Street building. So it's, either we shove them back into the Court Street building or we move out here, that's.
If it would be helpful, maybe two members at a time, I know Mr. Carter and Mr. Heelbo have walked the space, if the other three, on the set of a meeting?
I'm for that.
Okay. We could do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make, I'd make a motion to proceed with this plan.
Okay, Mr. Hips has made a motion to proceed with moving, renovating, uh, the community center for DSS office space, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm worried about, uh, Shirley. So she fully acknowledged, everything is taking place, will take place, and I think we will be in a better situation to really take a vote on it. And we could do that anytime, Reverend.
So how much time are you talking about to do that, so we'd have to call a special meeting?
Yes, call a special meeting, this is, uh, what Monday, we'll do it this week.
And what, what are the determining factors from Shirley that you would say that would need her?
I think we need to hear her thoughts and her pros and cons for what we are trying to propose. Now, it may not be nothing, or it may be one or two, two, uh, two items, but I feel more comfortable with, with her accepting this. She's been in that thirty, thirty some years, so it's got its, uh, it's got its seniority, so to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't entertain, who, who is your boss?
My boss, that's the point of the boss right now, don't have anything to do with public. I'm a public citizen. And the community center is a public facility for recreation, that's what it's designed for, okay? So, where I work at does not have anything to do with what I'm here for tonight.
I, I think it's Ms. Silverman, then it's the program we're talking about for the seniors, it's housed under.
Right, that, you, these will be fine, wherever you put them at over there, but that's not the point of where the building, the way the building's gonna be set up. You gave me a new office, correct? In the middle, where the, where he's talking about the tables and chairs, tables and chairs are here, I'm here, and then there's another space here. So now Jeff's gonna take all of that space and take it away. So, where does that leave me?
Okay, so probably for the long-term plan for the program, we would wanna engage CBACL into this discussion about what their future needs would be at the center.
And how soon can we get a discussion with them?
Uh, give her a call tomorrow, if that, if that's what you would like.
Sever the bill.
So you made a motion?
Did Susan, you call her? You make sure you tell her that I was not here representing CBACL, I was representing myself as a public citizen. 'Cause I know this will be a different story.
Mr. Rose, come on.
So now the county is contemplating, the county is contemplating moving the health department over to where the DSS used to be. Because they have to get out of the building that they're in, so it's, it's hard.
That's, that's what the facilities committee's looking at, yeah.
And they hardly, there's what, two people that work at the health? And they're gonna use two thousand square feet?
Okay, let me explain, the other side we're looking at is moving the registrar over, the health department and registrar. And the, because the building the health department registered in is gonna become a money pit. And we would like to, we look, we say down the future, let's sell that building. Move the registrar and health department in the Court Street and not putting one one into that building itself.
Wow. Lot of information here tonight, isn't it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, given, given the amount of new information, I withdraw my motion. Uh, i- if I, if I may, I don't think it's an ideal situation. I, I appreciate your efforts, I think it's a good solution, is it the best, I don't know. But I, I am just speaking from the experience of doing this type of work, that you can't do it in the environment that they're in. They've been doing it, but they haven't been doin', they have not been able to do it the best that they could, given the situation that they have.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
I'd like to ask Shirley a question.
Your sir.
We were informed that it was a DSS vehicle and one of the renters' vehicles, is that right, Mrs. Allen?
That's correct.
Uh, was burglarized in your thirty some years. Has that ever happened before?
No, sir. And we leave our vehicle parked there all the time and no one has ever touched it. And I don't know what the situation was the weekend that happened there, so.
That's why you're not down there anymore?
I'm not down anymore, my job was eliminated years, a couple of years ago, about four, five years ago, because I was the rental agent for the weekend in the evening facility. Nothing like this has ever happened. We might have a scuffle on the basketball court, but the guys, they usually leave, so no one has ever broken into anyone's car the time that I've been there.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I think the, uh, with the consensus of board that we. Have to, have to contact the senior citizen people and find out what their needs are gonna be and that we, after that, we schedule a special meeting as soon as we can because this is time sensitive. I don't think it's an issue, we can wait till the third week, third Monday of January to, to vote on. Is that acceptable?
No, Mr. Chairman, it's more than the seniors, it's the community center, it's more than just the seniors. But that's all. I mean, I'm just gonna vote, it doesn't matter what I think.
Well, I think we do need.
I know that I also, I'll throw something else on the table since we're throwing stuff on the table. Last year when I spoke to Dr. Bennett, she suggested they don't need that whole space they have up there, they could move to a smaller space. Double check with that, but I, but if we're throwing stuff on the table, let's.
We've addressed it.
What's that?
We've addressed it before, the movement of upstairs at the school avenue.
Uh-huh.
So.
She volunteered it.
Yeah, that's a whole new ballgame.
How's, how, how?
One of the departments was an elevator.
Elevator, that's right.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's say elevator.
If I, if I could suggest the potential of, and, and I don't know, given the holidays, but since we're doing an organizational meeting on.
January second, possibly.
January second, maybe this stuff could just be addressed that evening. January 2nd, maybe this stuff could just be addressed that evening. If the special call meeting is what is needed, since we'll be here anyhow.
Well, you might have enough votes to do this without me.
A motion's been withdrawn, Mr. Robbskill. There is no motion...
Somebody else can make it.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
Based upon what Mr. Hipps said, Jeff, what's, is that too late?
I'm just looking for a y or an a, which way to go. That's all I need.
You say things are in the airplane...
You're all in, so I'm ready to rock whenever I get to.
I think something we do need to keep in mind are the social services staff.
Yeah.
They've been operating in the current mode for a year now, and they need space. They need to be able to accommodate the public, and they need confidentiality. And right now, they're working in space conditions. It's just not adequate.
You could, Mr. Chairman, you could, for right now, move them, have them housed in the old building. But as you said, we growing. We got a new industry coming now.
And we just bought more land to build something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's table until the January 2nd meeting.
Thank Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, next we have action items. Commissioner of Revenue refund request. Ms. Sarah Henderson, Commissioner of Revenue, is requesting the following to be paid from 1209-5803 refunds. Refund Paul Cruz, $25.13 for 2014 personal property tax he was erroneously assessed. And refund Sidney Watts Jr., $64.13 for 2024 personal property taxes he paid. The first half tax on the vehicle that was sold in November. Staff recommends that we consider the above refund and transfer by consent, $89.26 from the general fund and appropriate it to the 1209-5803 line. No new local funds are required.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
Making motion to transfer stay of mail.
Mr. Carter's moved. Hipps has seconded. Mr. Walt, Mr. Robbskill?
Aye.
Mr. Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps? Mr. Carter?
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right, next organizational meeting. Please schedule the 2025 organization meeting of the Board of, other Board of Recommendations from staff. It's considered the first working day of the new year, which is Thursday, January 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Staff recommends consideration to hold the Board Organization meeting on Thursday, January 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. At the organizational meeting, the only business to be conducted would be election of the Chair, Vice Chair, Board Clerk, and adoption of the bylaws and rules and procedures, as well as setting other meeting dates, time, and location. I would take a motion that would add to that, to talk about the community center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Carter has moved. Hipps has approved, has seconded, is a further discussion. Mr. Robbskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Organizational meeting will be January 2nd, along with the meeting on the community center. All right, 2025 holiday schedule. Attached for the Board Review is a 2025 holiday schedule for Amaz County employees. Also attached, copy to Commonwealth and Church, Commonwealth of Virginia, 2025 pay and holiday calendar that the county aligns for with employee benefits. Staff recommends consideration of adoption of the 2025 holiday calendar for Amaz County employees.
Gosh.
Mr. Chairman?
I was a mouthful.
Ms. Adams, it, this says four hours additional. What are we talking about there? Four hours additional?
Holiday leave.
In addition to what? What does that mean?
Into the full day, which is, we're speaking of Christmas Day.
On the 24th or on the 26th? What is that?
That's on the state calendar. It's a half a day.
On the state calendar, it's a half a day? So we're approving four additional hours on top of this?
No, no, that's what the state has on their calendar. They're approving the full day, Christmas Day, and half a day on Christmas Eve.
So when it says four additional hours, you're just communicating to us that it's...
You see in the four additional hours?
On this page.
Oh, okay.
So you're just communicating to us that it's four additional hours? It's not?
Right. That's what the state has designated.
So you not off the full day of 24th or 26th?
Mm-mm.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the holiday schedule?
No, the 24th is only half a day.
Why, is that what we always do?
Yes.
For Thanksgiving, yes.
Not for Christmas.
But for Christmas, if there is, like, this year, you know, we had all-day Christmas Eve, and the Board granted the 23rd. And the 25th, I wish to do it, that's a holiday.
Sorry, let me look at my calendar. Sorry, guys. Make sure, make sure I understand the thing. No, the opposite. We're getting, this, this year, the counties close the 23rd, the 24th, and 25th.
That's correct.
So why would we be up in half a day on Christmas Eve next year?
Uh, that's only because the state, that's what's on the state calendar. We follow the state calendar.
I mean, and then the other one is the 26th. So they're saying it's a half day on the Friday after Thanksgiving?
No, that's all day, it's eight hours. Oh, you're looking at Thanksgiving.
The 26th.
Thanksgiving's four additional.
26th of December, what are you looking at?
No, 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 I'm looking at both, because this one's, here it says four additional hours, and this one here says four additional hours.
Okay, well, Thanksgiving's coming on.
What I'm, here's the point. What I always look at is, if people are coming into the office for one day, or there's a gap like that, that just doesn't make any operational sense to me to do that. So that's what I'm trying to avoid, is us approving a calendar where that sort of thing occurs. So that's all, that's the only reason I'm asking those questions.
Actually, Thanksgiving is the same thing that the state grants every year. It's half a day on Wednesday, all day Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
And then in December, Christmas Day is on Thursday, Thursday.
So the county would get, the county would have a half day?
They would have a half a day Wednesday, all day Thursday, all day Friday.
All right, I mean, people can decide what, you can decide what you want, but I would move that we'd have the 24th all day.
I would second, I would support that. Will you make a motion?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Anderson's made a motion to approve the calendar, adding the, what day is the full day?
December 24th.
December 24th is a full day. Reverend Jones has seconded, is there a discussion? Mr. Carter? Mr. Hipps? Mr. Robbskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
I'm sure staff will appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, next is resolution to support Elk Creek road traffic calming measures. As requested, staff, the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, has conducted a traffic engineering study at Elk Creek Road, Route 752, to consider remedial safety improvement measures to reduce speed of traffic and improve overall safety within the Amaz Community Park. The study is all recommendation by VDOT to install and implement the measure, new safety measures in the form of new and additional signage and speed bumps along Elk Creek Road. Staff recommendation, as resolution's been prepared to, in accordance with the recommendations of VDOT, please consider adopting the attached resolution in order for VDOT to move forward with implementing these traffic calming measures. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Carter's moved to approve the resolution implementing the traffic measures. Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Robbskill has seconded, is discussion? Hearing the, Mr. Robbskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Resolution has passed authorizing VDOT to implement these traffic calming measures on Elk Creek Road. All right, next, meeting appointments. Economic Development Authority, please consider the reappointment of Mr. Tom Nash and Mr. Jeff Smith to the Economic Development Authority. Mr. Nash and Mr. Smith have agreed to serve another four-year term. Staff recommends we consider this appointment to the Economic Development Authority for the four-year term ending December 31st, 2028. Is there a motion? Mr. Hipps has moved to appoint these two gentlemen for the four-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
Carter's second. Discussion? Mr. Robbskill? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps?
I vote aye also.
Mr. Nash and Mr. Smith have been approved for another four-year term on the EDA. All right, next, planning commission. Please consider the reappointment of Ms. Catherine Mobley and Ms. Annie Trent to the planning commission. Ms. Mobley and Ms. Trent have agreed to serve another four-year term. Staff recommends a reappointment of Ms. Mobley and Ms. Trent to the planning commission for another term which expires December 31st, 2028. Is there a motion?
Someone who?
Mr. Carter's moved to approve, is there a second? Mr. Hipps has seconded? Discussion? Mr. Carter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps? Mr. Robbskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Ms. Mobley and Ms. Trent have been reappointed for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2028 to the planning commission. I appreciate those ladies' service, they're doing a good job.
Yeah.
All right, next, Horizon Behavioral Health Board. The Board can recommend a citizen to serve on the Horizon Behavioral Health Board. Final approval of the recommendation will be considered by the Horizon Behavioral Health Board. Does the Board have anybody to recommend?
That's the first that came up. I didn't know we were supposed to be looking for one.
Think, we talked about it. I could be wrong. All right, I guess that table's still jangling. Ms. Adams, you got some comment?
I do. You made a recommendation last year, I believe, Ms. Adams. But the Horizon Board did not accept that recommendation. So although you make a recommendation, doesn't mean that they don't necessarily vote that person onto the board.
Well, why even recommend if they're not gonna approve? Hearing no recommendation, I guess it gets tabled. All right, consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at request of the Board Member prior to the vote of consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the Board individually in the order which they were removed from by the consent agenda immediately following consideration. Any items on the consent agenda you need removed and want to talk about?
Nope.
I got one, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Carter?
Because I just don't know, shoot, I can't find it. Anyway, overtime at the Amaz Elementary School for sports. Where is that at? Yeah, and I can't, I couldn't understand elementary student. I mean, primary student. Well, yeah, you're right. Elementary student.
Yeah, I'm looking, man.
Yeah. I'm thinking that AES, I have my mind's APS.
No. That'll happen.
So we're good?
Good.
All right, is there a motion to approve, accept, or approve the consent agenda?
I do.
Mr. Robbskill's moved to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Robbskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps?
I vote aye also. The consent agenda is approved.
All right, next we have the Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything at this time.
All right, County Minister, Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, you've got the report in front of you. If you have any questions, basically, it's data on the departments and the numbers associated with those departments. The only thing new there are a couple of activities, but I think the open house at the National Park is on Sunday, the 15th, and that would have already passed.
Yep. Along with the family and friends Christmas ceremony.
Yes. There's a note there about the financial audit that will be performed. It will probably be February before it's actually presented by the auditors. And the DSS Advisory Board, they did meet last Thursday. And they set the date of their meetings. The chairman who was appointed is Mr. Kevin Bailey, and the vice chair is Mr. Anthony Johnson. They adopted the bylaws, and the date, time, and location of the meeting was set, which would be the first Friday of every month at 5:30 p.m. at the community center.
Very good. Progress.
Progress.
And we had a couple of notes about the land acquisition and the solid waste study that's being performed. Hopefully, that will be ready for presentation in March.
Okay. Other reports and informational items, a couple of them, we talked about Code of Ethics to the Board, and so I just put it in there for your review, and that would be something we do in January if the Board felt so inclined, so that information would be reading enjoyment. Supervisor concerns, individual time for individual Board members to share information with other members of the Board and the public. Item presented under this heading require actual be for future meeting agenda. Under request, additional information for staff members, no item presented under this heading shall be acted upon at this meeting without the unanimous consent of the Board. Mr. Robbskill, issues?
No, sir, not this one.
Reverend Jones?
Yeah, I have a constituent that's concerned about wagon wheel road. Is that road in our plan for paving? It's not only this right now?
No.
Okay. Um, it's somewhere in my district.
It's a stone wall?
It's near the water, I think it's awful. Okay, I can get that.
Mr. Carter, is there a...
Yes, sir, I got one.
All right.
And that is talking about the DSS Advisory Board. Okay, the vice chairman of that is Mr. Train Johnson.
Yep.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, he's doing, he's doing an investigation, correct?
Uh, he's a reporter, he's a journalist, he does, looks into things that people feel are important at Amaz County, so...
The reason why I bring it up, I was gonna make this today. But when I learned of the organization of the DSS, and saw that he was selected as vice chairman, so to me, that could be something that he could be biased in, because he's working with it. And then again, maybe not. But the staple still falls out. And that bothers me. But I'm just bringing that up. Other than that? No.
All right. Okay, upcoming meetings will be decided at the organizational meeting on January 2nd. Next up is closed session. I have, we already have one in there regarding the Region 200, or 2000, excuse me. I'd like to add to the closed session agenda to talk about giving advice from the Council pertaining possible legal action. Is that how I word that, Mr. Chairman, sir?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe the proper motion would be that you move the Board Supervisors into closed session for the limited purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the Board related to Region 2000 pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. And for consultation with legal counsel requiring provision of legal advice by counsel related to the need to issue a cease and desist letter pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A8.
So I move that I, we add that to the closed mission, closed session agenda, is there a second? I see Mr. Carter shaking his head.
Yes.
Great. Mr. Robbskill? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hipps?
Carter?
And I vote aye also, so...